I'd like to call the City of Apache Junction Council Meeting to Order, which we will do telephonically tonight in the order of, uh, to keep our distance and we're gonna see how this works. We have a pretty light agenda. So, the invocation tonight will be led by Vice Mayor Wilson and the pledge by Councilmember Evans.
Chip, are you there?
Yes, I'm ready. Okay. Heavenly Father, we ask for your strength and assistance and oversight during this great time of turmoil. Your strength is needed for not only our city, but also for the entire community as we continue to work through this virus. Your assistance is needed to help everyone not only understand and cooperation as we continue to perform city business, as well as the community as they continue to perform businesses with their local businesses. Above all, your oversight to help everyone work through this situation and stay healthy. We also ask for your hand of support and protection for the city of police in the Phoenix and for the family and friends of Commander Greg Karnicall. We also extend this to all our police departments in Arizona as they mourn the passing of a fellow officer. We also express our additional concern and assistance for one of our former employees, Kathy Conley. Please be with her and assist her as she responds to medical assistance and give her strength and knowledge that we all wish her a speedy recovery. We also ask for your protective hand for our local first responders and as well as our military members and their families as they continue to not only protect us, but also respond to our needs and ask and assistance. Keep them all healthy and bring them home every day in the Lord's name. Amen.
Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
With liberty and justice for all.
That is a weird echo.
Roll call.
Mayor Sertie?
Here.
Vice Mayor Wilson?
Here.
Councilmember Barker?
Here.
Councilmember Evans?
Here.
Councilmember Rizzi?
Present.
Councilmember Schroder?
Present.
Councilmember Struble?
Here.
Do we have a motion, Your Honor?
Do we have a motion on the consent agenda?
Your Honor?
Yes.
I move that the consent agenda be accepted as presented and that the minutes of the regular meeting of March 17th be approved and that bid number PW 2019-53 to Western Emulsions Incorporated for supply, delivery, and application of asphalt emulsion for chip sealing, street maintenance operations in an amount not to exceed $548 per ton be approved for a one-year contract with the option of five one-year extensions with a maximum contract value of $750,000. And the bid number PW 2019-54 to Troyo Pavement Maintenance for supply and delivery of pre-coated gravel for chip sealing, street maintenance operations in an amount not to exceed $85 per ton be approved for a one-year contract with the option of five one-year extensions with a maximum contract value of $500,000. And that resolution number 20-14 authorizing the city to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with Maricopa County Department of Transportation for the design and construction of traffic signal improvements at the intersection of Meridian Drive and Baseline Avenue be approved. And that resolution number 2015, 20-15 authorizing the city to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with Maricopa County Department of Transportation for the installation of emergency service pre-uh preemption equipment at the intersection of Meridian Drive and Baseline Avenue be approved.
Is there a second?
Second.
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 I think I heard Chris the first. Roll call.
Councilmember Schroder?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Barker?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Rizzi?
Yes.
Councilmember Struble?
Yes.
Mayor Sertie?
Yes.
Unanimous, Your Honor?
Coop, we have no honorary presentations. If there are any current events, I'll call on the council members individually and you can say yes or no. Councilmember Struble?
No.
Councilmember Evans?
No, but stay well.
No, but what?
Stay well.
Stay well.
Okay. Vice Mayor Wilson?
No.
Councilmember Barker?
I'd just like to offer my thanks to all the volunteers in our community that have risen to the challenge of this pandemic and they're working their tails off. I really appreciate their efforts.
Councilmember Schroder?
No.
Councilmember Rizzi?
Um, yeah, I just wanted to comment that, um, with all of our restaurants in the community that are staying open to, um, serve, takeout, and delivery, um, just wanted to thank them all. And also say that, um, I've learned about a few new gems in the community as far as restaurants. The last two weeks, I think we've eaten out more than we have probably in the last six months. And, uh, we appreciate them all and just wanted to let the community know to support your local businesses and support your community and, uh, takeout Tuesday or try, uh, some of these restaurants for lunch or for dinner. And we just again want to thank them for being open.
Thank you, and I think Bryant may have some more on that later. So, yeah, I want to, uh, follow up on what Robin says. I want to thank all the nonprofits and whatever. There are a lot of people that are in their homes that can't get groceries. And, and there is help out there. There are people that will pick up groceries for you. And, uh, there, there's a way to coordinate that and all of the programs that we had, all the people that were getting served meals at the Multi-Gen, we're still trying to do that. And the, uh, the schools at, I know at Four Peaks for sure are, are giving out meals for the kids during the day.
Yes, for the district and Imagine Prep as well.
Yeah, and that's, and that's awesome, and we want to thank all those folks. And, uh, I've gotten more calls lately since the trash si- issue situation was settled than before. And I was always a big supporter of RAD, but I wanted to just say how disappointed I am with some of the shenanigans that they've pulled in the last few weeks. The, the city absolutely did not order them to pick up their cans when they did. They could have followed through all the way till April like they were supposed to and given the people a chance to return their cans. And a lot of people are stuck now having to fight to get their $50 back, which I don't think $50 is such a big deal to RAD, but it is to a lot of these people. And, uh, and if anybody is, uh, is gonna go ahead and do some kind of a suit or something, I will, I will help to sign on to that to try to, to get them to refund all of those $50. And just so that you know, just in the last week, RAD re-signed their contract with Queen Creek. They are the sole provider of the town of Queen Creek, so they definitely know what this is about. I just, I was very disappointed in them. And with Republic, I think things are settling in. This is their first week. They've only done a first couple pickups. Let, uh, there are some numbers available. If, if you're get, being skipped or is there some anomaly, let someone at the city, at the city manager's office know and they will follow up and we'll get this all running smoothly. With that, I'll head, I'll hand off to the city manager for his report.
Thank you, Your Honor. Mayor, members of council, Bryant Powell, city manager. First, I want to say thank you to your support and the consent agenda to keep things going. I think it's very important and symbolic tonight as we maintain safe distance from each other that we can show to our community that we will continue to provide the services in a way and a manner that's in best support our community. It's consistent with your policy and your budget. Um, tonight, we continue to invest in our basic infrastructure of street and roads. The project for Meridian and Baseline will be an outstanding project, and we thank you for support. I want to also add my support and great thanks and appreciation to every member of the Apache Junction team who over the last three weeks have been working very close together to communicate as best we can to help support one another as we provide the services when, when we learned what were essential and nonessential services. We found that the vast majority of what we do is essential, and for that, we're grateful. We're grateful for the opportunity to serve our, uh, one another, and we're grateful for the opportunity to make sure that we watch out for our residents. So, we ask at this time that we be mindful and prayerful of those who are serving and also to our residents. Um, we work really hard. Matt and the team have been working hard on teaching and educating certain rules to help minimize the risk. Rules like keeping our, our distance, um, doing the best we can to wash our hands and, and to do those things. So, I wanted to first start out in, in that way. Um, I want to also just, um, share that today we have four new executive orders, um, from the governor's office. They seem to come, um, every few days, and we try our best to, 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 to to communicate those to the staff and, and work at it. And so, today we have one, or four. One was regarding out-of-state travelers. Um, one is, is with, uh, the PPE at residential care facilities. One is, is, uh, about, uh, data reporting. And then the last one is regarding restaurants acting as grocery stores. And that one I want to highlight a little bit more. I encourage everyone to go to the governor's office website. Al has placed that here, or Matt has, on our, um, it's the Office of the Governor's website, uh, azgovernor.gov, and it keeps track of all the latest, uh, executive orders, and it gives the specific language. I learned a term today that I thought was very interesting called, we always talk about shopping local, but now I heard the term bank local. And as I was listening to the, the, the con- the conference today, a news conference, the bank local idea came up because some of the big banks in the U.S. who already, have already filled their obligation, Wells Fargo and Chase, I think were mentioned. So, we need to make sure we're communicating to our local businesses to keep close ties with Elan and Janine to hopefully get people connected to the local bank, banking system, as there may be capacity there. Um, the new executive order regard, that deals with restaurants acting as groceries, I want to read the language here, or the summary. It allows restaurants to repackage and sell grocery items that have, um, that they have on hand, including items not normally packaged and labeled for resale. Follows the U.S. Food and Drug Administration's recent decision to provide temporary flexibility for nutrition labeling of packaged food. Restaurants currently licensed or permitted to serve prepared food may sell paper goods, cleaning supplies, prepared, um, food in bulk, meat and vegetables. However, it does not permit a restaurant that does not hold a current state liquor license to sell alcoholic beverages. So, as we work through this next week, we'll have Elan and Janine there available to be able to, to help our local businesses, the ones that have been hurting the most on that. Um, connected to, to our restaurants and to our, to those businesses, our local businesses. I want to share that our economic development has been working so hard and diligently in conjunction with our local businesses. Um, we've, uh, made major adjustments to our sign code. City staff has utilizing unused Parks and Recreation A-phrase signs to make open for a takeout and delivery. We already have at least 13 out. I think we've done a few more already today, and we want to keep doing it. So, if you're hearing this or want to get hold of a council member or any of us at staff, we'd like to get that information out. At the same time, the marquee is also, um, the rules have been changed to allow for businesses to be able to be included on the downtown marquee at this time. We are also, um, city staff, uh, in regards to the $2.2 trillion stimulus package information. City staff is currently reaching out via phone calls and emails to all of our local businesses to inform and to teach about the fair, the federal care stimulus package. A contact list for all active Arizona Small Business Association lenders, um, is, is included in our website. Um, we also working very hard on our social media in conjunction with the Chamber of Commerce to also drive traffic, uh, to, to the SBA or the Small Business Association. One other thing I'll mention is that on our web, we've created a website just, um, particular for helping promote all, not just our restaurants, but any small business or nonprofit. Um, it's a source that, um, has been kept updated on the website with the latest information. And we want to make sure that, um, people, um, there can go there for learning about financial options that are available to, um, healthcare, to nonprofits, and also to our, to our restaurants. So, Mayor, this is, um, as I say, unprecedented times. We continue to work very hard to helping continue to have that economic base, um, as we start to look towards recovery at some point. Um, we, we, we again are thrilled for the opportunity to be able to, to serve, and, uh, that concludes my report tonight.
Yeah, there's, the trickle down is just now starting to happen. I actually had some deliveries at my store, and I asked how busy they are and you know, how, how does it feel being essential? And they said they're actually doing less and less because there's so many warehouses not working. But there's not a lot of things other than food not being delivered.
Yeah.
And then, uh, radio advertising is down because one of the major advertisers are restaurants, and they're not making any money, so they're pulling their advertising. So, it's trickling down to all elements of society and things you wouldn't even think about. Okay, we have no public hearings tonight. We have no old business. So, we're on to new business, which is the ratification of Pamela Harrison for the position of library director. Bryant?
Thank you, Your Honor, Mayor, members of the council. I am very happy to present to our community, um, our new library director for your ratification and, and vote tonight. Um, I'd like to invite Pam Harrison to please come forward and, 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 and be able to visit with you a little bit. I'm just gonna share that Pam is very experienced. She's worked with our library system as a supervisory librarian, um, and fund fan supervisor since 2014. And worked for the Maricopa County Library System before that from 2011 to 2014. And then she's also worked, um, before that as a, um, media and library specialist at Charlotte Mecklenblur schools um, and 2001. Um, and she, uh, let's see here. So, um, in addition, Pam has a Masters of Library Science degree from the University of Albany, New York, and a Bachelor of Arts Secondary Education, um, as well from SUNY Oswego, New York. Did I get that right?
SUNY Oswego.
SUNY. Apologize. So, um, Your Honor, this is Pam. Pam, I'll turn the time over to you.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Sertie and members of the council. Um, before I give you some more information about myself and my work with libraries and specifically with the Apache Junction Public Library, um, the mayor has asked me to talk a little bit about how library services are being continued currently, um, in lieu of the pandemic. Um, so I will speak to that for a few moments. Um, you may have read in a lot of the, um, announcements going out through the city that we have our drive-up window open. It's been open since March 18th. And our drive-up window has never been operational before this. It was, uh, part of the expansion um, back when the recession hit, and then it just was never, um, uh, brought to fruition. Um, so we have worked diligently on getting that, that window open so we can provide library services. Um, some of the things that we're doing at that window include, um, issuing library cards still, um, renewing our library cards for our patrons, and most importantly, um, giving them access to, uh, books, DVDs, and other materials, um, through holds. So, people can still call into the library and, um, ask for certain items to be placed on hold for them, and they can come pick them up at the window. Um, we've had great success with it so far, and we're looking forward to expanding services later. Um, we're averaging between phone calls and drive-up window transactions approximately 150 to 175 transactions per day, and that's not counting the people that are just driving through to return items. Um, we are taking precautions, giving, um, staff access to, uh, masks and gloves. Um, we are also quarantining our materials as they come in. They are put, being put on shelving carts where they are not touched for at least 72 hours um, before they are either placed on hold for another patron or put onto the library shelves. And, um, we've been really successful and really happy with the way this has worked out. So, if anyone, um, had any more questions, I'd be wel- willing to answer those for you.
So, the procedure, if anyone wants to use the library, is they will call the same number and say, hey, I've got three kids at home and we'd like to do whatever, and you guys can suggest what to pull for them.
Yes, definitely. And we've also increased our circular, um, our, um, limits on how many materials, uh, customers can check out. So, we've doubled those and doubled the amount of, uh, holds they can place. So, we're trying to give people as much access as possible to materials during this time.
Are you communicating with other communities to see what they're doing? Are they able to do this also, or is this pretty unique?
This is pretty unique. Um, we did check with nearby systems, including Mesa, Maricopa County Library District, um, Tempe, Chandler, and from our knowledge, they have all of their services, um, only available electronically.
So, so once again, our library is leading the way, so making us proud. Thank you.
Thanks. So, I will, um, give you further now an introduction that I had prepared for myself. A little bit, uh, repetitiveness here. Um, but I've been employed with the city now for almost six years, so you may have seen me in the youth department at the library. My entire professional career, I have been a librarian. The past 23 years, I have worked in school and public libraries in North Carolina and Arizona. My previous position before being hired with the City of Apache Junction was with the Maricopa County Library District, where I was the Youth and Adult Services Library Supervisor at the largest of its 19 branch libraries. And it was there that I honed my public librarian and supervision skills by providing very large programs to large groups as well as teaching individual patrons how to access 24/7 digital services such as eBooks on their electronic devices and also supervising a staff of 13 members. I loved this job, but there was one thing that was missing, and it was a sense of community. Coming to Apache Junction Public Library filled this void for me. Over the past six years, I've gotten to know very well many of our library customers, both adults and children, and I've built relationships with them. I've taught early literacy skills to families and have seen families thrive as infants had grown into adolescents. Coming to Apache Junction Public Library provided me the community intimacy that I sought. I realize in the role of library director, I will have very big shoes to fill. Spencer Payden had a vision of creating a library that is a true community destination place, and he surely achieved it. He has inspired children's imaginations by building a castle in the youth area. Developed a creation zone with a 3D printer, media digitizing station, and video and photo studio. And probably most importantly, he ensured services were available to those who needed them, including resume writing and job-seeking assistants. He always made lifelong learning a priority. I'm sure you're aware of the numerous compliments from our community about our beautiful library and the wonderful services it provides year-round. These services, however, are only made possible through continuous city support and strong leadership. As library director, I will work hard to continue the great work that it, that has been accomplished by our library. My vision is to cultivate an even stronger library presence in our community through increased outreach services and collaboration with other city departments to reach community goals. I hope you'll allow me to continue the impressive legacy of the Apache Junction Public Library as its next library director. Thank you.
Do any council folk on the phone have any, uh, questions or comments? Okay, I don't hear any. So, I will ask for, uh, Bryant, we're, this is gonna be a regular motion to approve.
Yeah, so, Your Honor, in the city code, this is, uh, outlined in the process of a new director to ratify, and it is, there is a motion.
Would someone like to make a motion?
Your Honor?
Yes, Gail.
I move to ratify the appointment of Pamela Harrison to the position of library director.
Seconded.
Seconded by Chip. Roll call.
Councilmember Barker?
Yes.
Councilmember Struble?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Rizzi?
Yes.
Councilmember Schroder?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Mayor Sertie?
Yes.
Unanimous, Your Honor?
Thank you, and congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Okay, we have no direction to staff, so I will ask for a, uh, can I have a motion on the selection of the next meeting dates?
Your Honor?
Yes.
I move that an executive session at 6:00 PM and a work session at 7:00 PM for Monday, April 20th, 2020, and an executive session at 6:00 PM and a work session at 7:00 PM for Tuesday, April 21st, 2020, be held in the City Council Conference Room and City Council Chambers located at 300 East Superstition Boulevard, Apache Junction, Arizona, respectively, and other meetings if necessary. Second.
Okay, we have a second. Before we vote, I would say that I imagine in two weeks, we may still be under these same restrictions, so we may well have to run the next meetings like this. Correct, Bryant?
That is correct, and, yeah, we're still looking at video conferencing. There are some pros and cons to that, but yes, we'll, I don't see thing, for sure, in April.
Okay. All right, so we have a second. Roll call.
Councilmember Schroder?
Yes.
Councilmember Barker?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Struble?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Rizzi?
Yes.
Mayor Sertie?
Yes.
Unanimous, Your Honor?
And we have one call to the public tonight, and he's done this before, so he knows the roles, and that is George Schroder.
Good evening to everyone at home too. We live in the 21st century, and we still can't communicate. Our current situation is, is good. I mean, we need to do this. So, the thing that's better than being cool is being protected and being alive. Yeah, okay, which nobody here is. Anyway.
Anyway, we have a house, 2525 West Virginia. I have talked to county health department, talked to the police, talked to our city health inspector, uh, office. Nobody, I mean, nobody wants to go in that house. They can't find a mother or a sister. Mark told me they're dead. We have multiple complaints from the neighbors about bad smell in this house. Hmm, let's put two and two together. These people might be in the house, dead. But nobody wants to check that out, so, you know, we got more important things to do. Okay. RAD, bad, very bad. They're gouging me twice. I quit them in August, and they still wouldn't leave me alone. Well, they are now. They will never get money from me. Hmm. Republic. I took my can back to the Maple Circle, uh, facility where I used to work. They weren't unhappy, but there was nothing they could do. I gave them a letter from my, uh, significant other, and she stated, "We will never, ever have a service with Republic." Now, I've told you, we will never have the numbers. So they got cans at houses where there's never been people living. There's never been a house. They put a second account in somebody's name, illegitimately and fraudulently. So USAA had a couple million people that they put out in their insurance policies, didn't even tell their family when they died, and never gave them any of the money. Wells Fargo, five million accounts, nobody knew anything about. Republic waste and this contract they have with the city is nothing more than a protection racket, and it's not going to stand. Uh, as I understand it, Kelly Thompson has the bill in committee, which will take out the punitive and criminal damages from any said action. Go, Kelly. Have a good night.
Would anyone care to respond? Okay, so I want to commend staff once again for, uh, how smoothly this went. Luckily, we had a, a small agenda, but I think we could handle more, so if we need to put on some more items for the next meeting, I think we could do it confidently, and we'll get through this. I mean, every, this is happening all over the country, and life goes on and, uh, governments go on, so with that, we will adjourn the meeting.